And get it to YouTube. All right. Hello, everyone. This is the Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 Department Head Meeting. It is 10:01 a.m. and I am calling this meeting to order. This meeting is being audio and video recorded and it will be replayed on Channel 9 and it will also be placed on YouTube. Before we get started, I did want to take a roll call vote. Selectmen Pacheco? Oops, sorry, you're muted. Okay. Selectmen Gulart. Oh, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. And Selectmen Rapos is aye, all are present. And with that, I ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, I do want to ask any department heads, as is customary. If anyone has any updates they would like to provide that they feel other departments may benefit from, please feel free to unmute yourself and you may have the floor. And Selectmen Pacheco and Selectmen Gulart, that goes for you too. If you have any updates you wanted to apprise the departments of, please feel free to take the floor. Oh, you're muted, sir. Sorry. I still can't hear him. I heard him before. I don't understand. No, I still can't hear it. Can anyone else here? Selectmen Pacheco?
No, I think he's playing a trick on us. He's just making me tenny.
He's really not saying anything. Selectmen Pacheco, is it okay? Do you want to dial in? I'll give you a moment and then I'll ask anyone else if they have anything.
Still can't hear me?
Oh, I can hear you. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a question on the Medal of Honor for Frederick Anderson. Is there any update on that?
I think it's Mr. Rhines that might have updates. I don't see him on here.
I, I, I have something on that.
Okay, yes, Mr. Ferry.
So I asked Mr. Hershey to help design the sign for the bridge. And he did that. I just got to order the sign and get that done.
Nice.
Do you have, is there a target date? We want this up and installed?
Yes, I believe the family's going to be here the last week of March, I think. I'm not positive on that, but I'm pretty sure it's the last week of March the family's going to be here. So it'd be nice if we have it up and we have some kind of a ceremony. But Mr. Rhines, as Dr. Z has said, Mr. Rhines has been involved in the past with this, so maybe Mr. Rhines can give us some info on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Or he may show up. He may just be late. I'll send him a text message while we're in this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though. And thank you, Mr. Ferry, as well. Selectmen Gulart, did you have any updates?
Um. Well, the stormwater committee's meeting today. I did get, I did contact Matt Koster. And this will be something that will be coming before the Board of Selectmen. But we, on Brook Street, there was a question about an easement and what I found out was Attorney Costa is going to draft something called a license, which the Board of Selectmen will have to vote, which means we will give permission to the company that is going to do that solar farm to maintain the ditch and all those requirements will be established by Mr. Ferry. Excuse me. But they will never own the property, so it's not an easement. I had originally said, maybe this is a reverse easement, but the Brook Street project, we will be moving ahead with that. And that was one of the questions we had. How do we do this? So I'll be giving the Selectmen more info, but eventually we will vote on this. But the main thing is they will never own the property. They'll be able to maintain it. And when that project's all done, I guess someday, and they go away, it still belongs to the town of Dayton. So this is something new. We've never dealt with licensing before, but it will be coming.
Thank you, Selectmen Gulart. Jocelyn Tavarez had wrote in the chat that she had an update, and then I'll go to Mr. Ferry, sir. Ms. Tavarez?
I just wanted to let everyone know, we have state tax forms in at the library and we are, I'm hearing that federal tax forms are on the way. So if anyone needs paper forms, that we are avail, they're available for pickup by our curbside service. You can call the library, let us know when you're coming. We will get those to you. We'll bring them to your car and we'll also print out any forms that you may need. I can also provide the Select Board with, we have learned some resources for low-income families or lower-income families and the elderly for tax preparation help and I'll just, um, it's, Chris, I see your question in the chat. I can look into the 1099s. We typically don't get those forms, but I can look to see what we can provide for you. And I, we've been sharing programming with Fall River, Berkeley, Somerset and Swansea. The five libraries have been sharing digital programming with each other and I can send you a list of upcoming programs that will be happening throughout the rest of February and March. It's just a lot to say here and I don't know how interested people are really in. Doesn't affect their everyday life, so. But I'll send it to you for announcements.
Jocelyn? Thank you. Yes, that was my, you actually just answered me. Yes, I would love to get that information, especially the tax preparation information for seniors and for low-income families. And the reason is because I actually had a resident reach out before tax season got underway about possible resources and I just unfortunately hadn't had the time to get around to speaking to like the Council on Aging about it, especially for seniors. So I appreciate that. If you could obviously forward that information to our office and maybe we could do like a social media post. It might be tough reaching, obviously, low-income families on social media. It's kind of an oxymoron, but um, you know, we're going to try our best to get the word out for people because it was something that I had been asked about. So that's, that's great.
We, we got, we got a question as well, so that's why it came to us, so.
Selectmen Pacheco, I saw your hand up.
Yes, I was also asked that same question about taxes. So maybe we can do it with our announcements at Select Board meetings. Just make that announcement that they're able to assist seniors with their taxes and that they have the tax forms.
I agree. I know, Mr. Ferry, is your, did you just have a general update? I think Mr. Gale had his hand up for something related to taxes. Mr. Gale?
Thank you. What I wanted to ask you, Jocelyn, do you know, or I know this year, of course, with COVID, everything is going to be different, but do you have any quick general information you can share with all of us? On whether or not there's going to be any kind of vital volunteer assistance directly? Or how that's going to have to be handled this year? Because especially for seniors and low income, they can't go to a senior center or to other facilities for any kind of volunteer services.
They are being directed through Citizens for Citizens and they're calling the Fall River Office as the initial contact.
Okay. And then are they setting, are they setting up remote or?
That I don't know. I don't know if they're, from there, what is happening.
Is that part of the, is that part of the information that you're going to be sharing? Because it would be.
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, from there. I know the initial contact is through Fall River.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ferry, sir, you have the floor.
All I had was, oh, I hand me down the shredder finally failed, so if someone else has a working shredder that they've replaced, we could use it. We don't do a lot of shredding, but we could use one. And the other thing is, come this time tomorrow, we'll have to entertain. We don't start having materials delivered. We'll have to entertain going to the second lowest bidder on assault. We haven't had, outside of a small delivery early in the season, we haven't had a delivery. So the shed's empty. We're not, we're not going to be prepared for this weekend.
Can I give you an update that just came into my phone from our building commissioner, Mr. Ferry? Related to that, I think it might be helpful for you. He, Mr. Agar said he, so sorry, he's having a heat and water issue that he's dealing with, so he can't be here. So he apologizes, but he did say he's purchased an industrial-type document shredder and he encourages all departments with the need to discard excess public records to take advantage of the new shredding system, especially those offices that may be relocating. Thank you. Would that help you, Mr. Ferry?
The, the hot water problem is my garage and he, he's got a very large shredder and that's, he's talking about when you're moving offices and when a high volume. I'm just talking about casual. If someone's got a small shredder that they're not using, I just like to have it here just for casual use.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was it?
So.
Yeah, Mr. Selectmen Gulart.
So, Mr. Ferry, are you going to be able to have enough, to have a delivery in time if we get a storm this weekend?
Like I said, we'll have to entertain the second lowest bidder if they don't cooperate by this time tomorrow.
Well, then we just won't allow it to storm. That's all. Tom, you're in charge.
Storms are funny. They, they can take a very large volume of material, so we got to have material here.
Tom, did you have, excuse me, Mr. Ferry, did you have anything else?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you, sir. I wanted to give just a couple brief updates and I felt like I should have said this at the top and I apologize. We have successfully hired and negotiated a contract with our Newtown Administrator, Mike Mullen. He apologizes. He couldn't join us, obviously, for this meeting today as he's still the Norfolk County Administrator. But we did ratify his contract and he has a March 8th, 2021 start date. So don't be surprised if he reaches out. You know, just to, you know, start talking and becoming familiar with different departmental needs, especially as we enter budget season. He met with myself and our Town Treasurer Collector today and it was a very nice meeting. And he also met with both our Executive Director of Council on Aging, Alice Souza, and our Fire Chief, Chris McGee, yesterday for different budget meetings and it all went well. So he's getting up to speed so that he'll hit the ground running on March 8th. So don't be shy, say hello, congratulate him. He's going to be a great team player and I think he's going to be a great addition to the town, just like Mallory was when she was here. My other update is, I did, so obviously we didn't have a town administrator. We did get funds approved at an annual town meeting, at the annual, I believe, or the special for the library project. So we need other means of egress, et cetera. But because we didn't have a town administrator or a chief procurement officer, that sort of got put on the shelf because there was no one able to coordinate it all in order to procure like a contractor to really do the work because it's not going to be done in-house. So I have spoke to the Newtown Administrator about this. It is on his radar. And we hope to make progress to that project this year when he starts. So looking forward to that. The other thing I wanted to apprise the board, and this is more for Selectmen Pacheco and Selectmen Gulart. The open space and recreation plan was completed and the open space committee, of which I am a non-voting Board of Selectmen Liaison, did vote to unanimously approve it. Bill Napolitano from Serpid is doing some minor reformatting and he's going to be submitting, I think this week, perhaps next week, to Sean Cronin at DCS. No relation to our Sergeant Sean Cronin. And the big to-do on this is that it makes the town of Dayton eligible for more of those community compact cabinet best practices grants, which brought us stormwater management and education for Selectmen Gulart. And former Selectmen Taylor and myself worked on the open space and recreation plan, which has just been completed, and also worked on forming the Agricultural Commission. So those three objectives, once this is formally submitted, will have been completed and we can go up for more grants. The other thing is, I'm working on the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. It's due February 26th. I've been working with our Commissions on Disability Coordinator. I got that right this time, Mr. Gale. Jonathan Gale on this and also working with our Highway Superintendent, Tom Ferry, and also Mrs. Brady. And so we hope to get that submitted by February 26th and that will address a lot of different ADA work that needs to be completed, both in North and South Dayton, so all around town, different streets in both ends of town. And so that monies, if we get it, would go a long way to addressing some of those needs and making things more equitable for our disabled community in town. The other thing I wanted to let department heads know is that there were some departments that just never submitted a budget at all. I reached out to everyone. I have reached out twice, sometimes three times. And I just want to let you know, if you're one of those departments that didn't submit a budget, I do plan on level funding it. I'm obviously not, I don't think we should make it zero. I don't think that's fair. I'll give you an example. One of the boards that didn't submit a budget is the ZBA. They don't have an office manager right now. And also Parks and Recreation Commission didn't. I don't think it's fair to punish people because the elected officials or appointed officials didn't get their budget in. So I don't know what the board wants to do. I was simply going to just put FY21 into FY22 rather than not have anything. So I just wanted to let everyone know. But I also wanted to say thank you so much to everyone who did put a lot of time and effort and conscientious work into their budgets. The meetings are going well. These budgets will be going to the Board of Selectmen shortly at one of their upcoming meetings or our upcoming meetings. And the Board of Selectmen will be making their formal recommendations on the various departmental requests. So that is coming up as well. Did I miss anything? I don't think I missed anything. Does anyone else have, hi, Mr. Rhines? Mr. Rhines did get back to me. He said he didn't have any updates on the Medal of Honor. So we will need to speak to former Veterans Agent Don Hershey about that. Did anybody else have any, any other updates? Mrs. Hathaway, you have the floor. You have to unmute yourself, that's all.
Okay, so I went to the insurance committee meeting and our percentage for insurance for the next year is going to be 2%. Also, they've given us a premium holiday, which in April will have no insurance taken out of anybody's paychecks for one month. So that's good news. That's all I really have is just, just letting you know. Yeah, I'm muted.
Sorry, I just, thank you.
I had a question for Mary.
Yes.
You had, a while back, you had asked about the orthodontic.
Yes, we're still working on it because Blue Cross is presenting a a policy for them instead of going through all this dental. So we're just kind of comparing rates that would be affected July 1st, but everyone has to, whoever's in our group has to all agree on these rates and they are, they're all less money than we're currently paying. I am, also dental is coming back because they want to keep our business. So they're trying to work with us to get orthodontics, health, and giving them a better rate.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any updates for the team?
This is Mr. Gale. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Commission on Disability is beginning to reach out to other town committees and commissions for a park, for accessible parks in the town of Dayton, or a single accessible park. We don't know where exactly it's going to be and what form it's going to take yet, but I have a feeling we will be reaching out to different departments, highway, police as well and so forth for input as to wherever it's going to be and potential traffic and grading and a number of other things that can be involved in the project as time goes on. That won't happen for a while yet. We're also going to be having some public meetings to get input from the community at large about what they would like to have in an accessible park slash playground and what we can do with the budget that ultimately we're going to put together for it. So our goal is to come back to town meeting in June, if that's what it is, if we are able, and to be able to recommend to the town what we'd like to do going forward. So stay tuned for that, please, everyone, and we'll be asking for your help and support on that. The other thing with regard to the COD is Brad alluded to already, is working on the Streets Project and the sidewalks and so forth. If there are things in town in general that any of you feel should be addressed or looked at by the COD, please send me an email or let me know. It doesn't mean we'll get to it tomorrow. It could be two years because we've got a big bucket list to go through. But we'd like to at least have different things that we might want to consider on our radar over time. So I just wanted to throw that out there and let everybody know that that's where, that's where we stand on that right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ferry?
Yes, more directed than Mr. Gale with those comments, in particular, the playgrounds, the outside audit identified needs. And so basically, anything that we were working on was halted because it needed engineering and whatnot. That, those are already identified and should be expedited because other than that, we're not going to do anything until, because that's what the audit identified.
I, I think, Tom.
Sooner than later, if they get prepared for an annual warrant.
Absolutely. And what we're, what we're, what we're starting with in terms of identifying things that were done from the KMA report, we're starting with, in terms of large projects that relate to that, we're starting with the town hall first and looking at a potential contract with an engineering firm to look at things that need to be done with regard to town hall, the surface area around town hall, inside town hall, the ramp, those types of things. So ultimately, as time goes on, that will involve different folks, I'm assuming, including you as well for some input or some assistance with it, however it may go. The playground part of it is right now in the developmental stage with different town committees and commissions. So we don't know right now that, there's so many things in the report to identify. You know, obviously, our public facilities are one of them. We don't know right now where the park would be, if it's going to stay in North Dayton, or it's going to potentially be moved and something's going to be reallocated over there. There's, there's so many possibilities to doing this, whether it's fully accessible in that location, how complex that would be. So you're right, in some cases, there will have to be some engineering study done for some of this.
Sorry, Selectmen Gulart?
When you were talking about facilities, a number of people have said to me, why doesn't the town fix the sidewalks that go by the mill? And I don't think we own those sidewalks, do we, Tom? Mr. Ferry?
Your, your question was, you don't think we own the sidewalks by the mill?
Yeah, people have complained about the sidewalks that run right by the mill on, on the north side of Spring Street. And they keep saying, how, why doesn't the town fix that? You're putting in new sidewalks, but those are broken up. Does the town actually own those sidewalks or are they private?
We own most of the sidewalks directly in front of that mill building. I don't believe we, we own. I'll have to look into that. I believe they actually own the roadway and that big island also, all-inclusive.
So to tie that into what Mr. Gale had said, if you know of areas, and this is a question for either Mr. Ferry or Mr. Gale. If those sidewalks are privately owned and they are not certainly prob, not ADA compliant and they are broken up, is there something that can be done to tell the owners, you've got to fix those and they've got to become ADA compliant?
Answer to your question is a little bit of a yes and a little bit of a no. And what I mean by that is, the ADA criteria under Community Access Monitoring covers titles one, two, and three. Title two being the primary one because that relates to public buildings and public land and so forth, side, public sidewalks. Titles one and three, to some extent, cross the lines between public and private relationship and partnership. And what happens is we have the ability through the public-private partnership of those titles to reach out to the owner of that property and to ask them to make a repair on behalf of people with disability. We can't force them to necessarily. The only way we could force them to potentially where if they were doing a larger reconstruction project and then we would have to get into cost ratios and there's different formulas. So you know, we can, through the auspices of the COD, reach out and then we can send them a letter, put it together. You know, we would probably send it to the Board of Selectmen first for review. And if we had the Board of Selectmen's blessing, then yes, we would do it. But if that's something that you feel is worth looking at and is important, Mrs. Gulart, if you could send me more information about it and I'd be happy to look into it and see what we can do. And even if it's simply initially making a phone call and starting a conversation, that's, that's worth doing.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes, well, a lot that needs to happen. I, I think along with Mr. Gale's comments, I think we should take advantage and with the new administrator coming, I think we should shoot for low-hanging fruit and get something done because to put all the playgrounds on hold after that outside audit, I think is not going to be fair to the community.
And I agree with Mr. Ferry. We don't want to put playgrounds on hold. That's why we're, we're putting the, the, I'm going to call it a task force together now to begin doing the work and the research and the planning so that that doesn't get put on hold.
Okay, so what I'm going to propose is, I'll take another look at the area. My concern is that, yes, it needs to be done. The townspeople that have spoken to me said, you're putting in all new sidewalks. Oh, you're fixing smaller sidewalks like the narrow one that's near the St. Nicholas Church. But that big sidewalk that a lot of people walk on, and that's when I explain, I don't think we own it. But what I'm willing to do is when the ground is clear, take another look, work with Mr. Ferry and Mr. Gale. We'll come up with a, a description of what's there and what we think needs to be done. I know the mill has changed ownership, but I can tell you that when Mr. Ferry approached them a year or two ago, the former owners, about a drainage situation, the former owners were very cooperative. So I'm hoping that once we can put something together, the new owners would realize the value of doing something because obviously they want to rent that property. So so I will work with Mr. Ferry and Mr. Gale and see what we can come up with once the road, the sidewalks are clear again and we can get a really good look, okay?
So we may want to put a pause on that simply because Mrs. Brady and I met with the person who's actually about to buy the entire mill. They're going to have a new owner soon. So I know you've driven by and seen the for lease sign. The new owner is going to still rent out space, so I don't, I'm not, I don't think we're expecting a lot of the tenants to change as to who's comprising the building now. But they do want to start a cannabis cultivation site. That's part of the reason they're buying the mill. So he was very nice. I definitely get the impression that he wants to work with the town once he's the owner. And you know, I can definitely forward you all his information, Selectmen Gulart and Mr. Ferry as well.
Yeah, I don't see this happening right away, Dr. Z, simply because of number one, snow and everything else. And the last time I was up in the area with, when Mr. Ferry was there, it was during cleaning of catch basins and things. And then, of course, we had our sidewalk projects in three parts of town. And that's when I started to hear people, you know, commenting. So yeah, this isn't going to happen right away. And, and again, it would be something that we would put together as a draft and bring to the Board of Selectmen, so.
There are, there are also, in some, in some cases, when you have public-private partnership, potentially, if they're, if they weren't able to, we want to establish for something like this, there are often grants available or no interest loans available to the developer or the owner of the property through the state and the federal government, specifically when it comes to reassessing for people with disabilities. So potentially, they would be willing to get into having that conversation once they've, they've taken ownership of the property.
And that, that area around that park, although it hasn't been designated as a historic area, that was designed by Frederick Holmstead, so there is certainly some historical value to that whole landscape architecture, let me put it that way. Landscape architecture, let me put it that way.
Thank you, Select Mingular and Mr. Ferry and Mr. Gail. Mr. Gail, did you have anything else?
No, right now I'm good.
All right. Well, I have stuff for you and we'll talk offline about the grant.
Sounds like a plan.
Alrighty. Um, does anyone else have any any further updates? Does anyone have any updates on COVID? Or want to provide any updates or anything? I know the numbers have been going down. Um, just from reading the reports, but did anyone want to add anything?
This is Mr. Gail. I'm simply, I know that there's another meeting at eleven o'clock, um, which I'm going to be joining by Zoom with regard to emergency preparedness. And I don't want to, I don't want to step on anything that's going to be discussed there because that'll be my first first meeting of that. Thank you. But my only my only question is whether or not. Um, anyone so far knows of anything that's planned for the town to assist seniors in general or people with disability. For example, through the two-one-one program to schedule appointments or arrange transportation. Um, those are things that, and again, I'll have this conversation more extensively, I hope, in the next come, the next meeting. Um, but those are things that uh we can offer support to through the C O D. And through our our members of our our commission and so forth. So I don't, yes.
What, I'm sorry to interrupt. I I had a question about the arranged transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Not to get too much into the weeds, is, would that only be for. Disabled individuals, or would it also apply to folks like other vulnerable populations like seniors?
Yes. The answer is, the answer to your question is yes. It would apply to other vulnerable populations as well, and these right now are for people over seventy-five. So, you know, this is, this is a void that right now, if the Council on Aging is not able to fill. Um, you know, for for, you know, reasons that are certainly reasonable. This is a void that potentially the C O D can fill. And we could start this as early as this week. I think we could, we could tool up and start as early as this week. To support residents who need, who either don't know how to use the technology, don't have access to technology. Can't see well enough for the technology simply because of age, or because they have a disability and they're seventy-five or older. So if we couch it all in that, we can provide assistance to people through the two-one-one system. To book as well as to doing it online for them. And we have folks who are ready to step up and do that. These are not anything that crosses HIPAA line. From my understanding, there's no HIPAA violations involved here. Potentially that we would have to worry about by providing this kind of support. So again, I know we're going to have this conversation. In other meetings as well, but I wanted to put it out there for everybody to think about for the next fifteen minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I can speak.
Sure.
That.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, so the numbers are coming down. Uh, we are seeing that the cases that are getting it seem to be more severe, though. So there's less people getting it, but it seems to be more severe. But it is getting better. Yes, we are still trying to figure out how to vaccinate everybody in town. Obviously, we're starting with the seventy-five plus. We're working on that and trying to figure it out. There have been some questions raised with the State Attorney General's Office about HIPAA violations and such. If I fill out the form. How am I certifying to your health? And is that, does that get us in trouble? And I guess there are some acts that protect people, so they're trying to sort that out now. We've been talking with a lot of other towns that have put in requests for two hundred and fifty doses and got a hundred. So they're struggling with their not getting doses that they're asking for and and stuff like that. Um. We have heard that Gillette Stadium has thousands and thousands of openings, and they have thousands and thousands of vaccines, but nobody's signing up for them. So um, there's places that you can go to get it and that, and right now it's in Dayton, but we are uh working. We will be furthering these discussions at emergency preparedness and border health and obviously border select minimum, so it will be continuing.
Can I ask a question? Todd, thank you for that information. That's helpful. Mr. Gail?
Yes.
Would this transportation issue, you know, if Foxborough is far away from Dayton, we're obviously trying. Um, we obviously recognize that the need to have it closer to home just because of vulnerable populations and disabled. With the transportation two-on-one system you're mentioning, does, i- is Foxborough too far? How does that all work?
My understanding is that if Foxborough or other locations have vaccine available. That transportation can be arranged to those sites, and it's that it's free of charge, and it would be. Provided by the Commonwealth through different transportation services that that they currently use. What one of the things that they've also done, for example. To make this work is there are the typical limousine companies that do airport runs, things like that, you know, that have hundreds of limousines. There's no work for them right now. So the state's contracted with some of these companies to provide some of this transportation. So it's not just through the medical transport, through GATR or things like that, but as through some of these other companies as well. Um, as of a couple of days ago, if you lived in this area and the only place you could get. A vaccination potentially was in Foxborough, yes, they were still offering transport to that. I would have to reach out to that part of it. Um. I would love, I again, I, you know, we have the next meeting coming up, and I'd like to hear from Todd, too, at that point. Todd, your thoughts with regard to the the two-on-one and, you know, what we can offer, because we can offer the assistance to set up appointments. In many cases, and in other cases, we can help arrange transport. That's more involved, but we can do it. So. Maybe there's a way that we can work with you on that to put something together. So. We can't get the vaccinations to the town, but we can get people to the vaccination sites.
Yeah, we can talk about this more in in depth uh with the Emergency Preparedness Committee next, Mr. Gail. I agree. Um, definitely something worth exploring. Uh, Select Board Member Pacheco and then Sackman Gular?
I just want to, um. I understand if we do do it in town, we're not going to get all the vaccines that we want, but anything can help seniors there. Thing is that a house bonding in uh we could provide transportation in Dayton. I know that, for example, Spons has been donors for at least a week. I think this might be their second week. Uh, they're not getting the they want. Uh, at least Spons, he got six. Because they're doing it with summers, it's summers that got sixty. Uh, but anything that we can do uh. Uh, to help uh the seniors, either assist them in getting the vaccinations some other place. Or to get vaccinations in town. I think it's very important that we uh make a big effort for that. I'm not going to be at the meeting at eleven. I just hope that uh you guys are able to take a look at that and and work on that.
Thank you, sir. I agree. Select Mingular?
Um, I got an email from Brigham and Women's M G H telling me, I I think it was a week ago, that I'm eligible for the vaccine. And just go to a particular site. Well, all of the sites are way too far. I mean, I'm not going to Chelsea and Pembroke and. Obviously, Boston. And so I have written back to them and said, why don't you open up Foxborough? Because. It certainly is a lot closer than that. And not only that, it's inside because it's in the Putnam Club. And since both of those medical facilities have medical buildings, it, I just don't understand why. They aren't taking advantage of doing this at Foxborough where they seem to have plenty of the vaccine. I don't know. I don't know who to contact to raise the issue, but maybe our uh. Our Emergency Prepared Committee might be able to get information um on what to do.
I agree, Select Mingular. And this is definitely something that we'll discuss in the next hour. Chief McGee, I wanted to ask you a quick question, if if I may, or Mr. Pilling. So I remember when we started the contact tracing. Um, a lot of it was being done by the CDC and they weren't even getting to people. They were liter- people were literally fine. By the time the CDC got to them fourteen days later, they were, they didn't have COVID anymore. Or at least the symptoms. And so my understanding is that the state. Has created some sort of a board or a commission for contact tracing to assist and to address that gap. Eh, eh, you know, between the federal government being able to do it. Is that. Real, or did I mishear that? And this was something that I heard recently.
Um, I know they are talking about creating a way to get assistance for people over sixty-five. In order to help them get the vaccines, because a lot of them struggle with the paperwork. And that is set up, and that's in beta testing mode at the moment. Um, and and that is something falling out. Yes, the state has always had the C T C for doing contact tracing, and yes, they were calling people on day fourteen. We're still having people now that. Are, they weren't necessarily ours because they lived in another town, but they were part of a cluster, but they're calling us because nobody from the state is calling them back. Um, we obviously are calling everybody, and we are having a much higher success rate, and. The people we're talking to are not getting satisfaction from. So we're getting calls from people in other towns who aren't getting answers, and they're calling us because they know we answered the phone. So um, but but we're 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 making huge progress, and the number of cases that we're following at one time has dropped significantly.
Mm-hmm. No, I know you guys have done, I know the Health Department has done a really good job. What I'm, I guess what I, what I, what I'm thinking in my mind. Is that we're at the point, we may be at the point now. Where we may need to focus all our efforts on vaccinating people and not. And and just have the C T C handle the contact tracing. I spoke to the town administrator in Easton. He said all of their efforts are being done on an in-house um, like, like preparing, doing test runs for in-house vaccine administration. I am not proposing that. All I'm saying is, we may need to shift our focus to have an all-hands-on-deck approach to the vaccine administration. And really just leave the contact tracing up to the C T C. And we can have that conversation at a future Board of Selectmen's meeting, but it is something that I just wanted to make everyone aware that I've started to think about. Um, so those are my thoughts.
But yes, every day when the cases come in, every single case, you get the choice, do you send it to C T C or do you keep it? And we've been checking no to almost all of them.
Yeah.
The benefit that we sent to C T C, the people that were on a plane. Or on a hockey team or something like that, like, we don't have time to call twenty people, so um, and we dump those. But every every case that comes in, we, every day, we'd have to log in, check off no for all of them, which is not a big deal, but N C T people follow that.
All right. Did anybody ha- and thank you, uh, Mr. Pilling. I know you guys are working hard, and please um let uh Office Manager Grassi know that we appreciate her efforts as well. Uh, did anybody have anything else? I see Mrs. Caledonia. Oh, Mrs. Brady has something. Yes, boss.
I have a guest who wishes to speak.
Oh, who who is this guest?
Good morning, uh, members of the Board of Selectmen Chairman, uh, member, memberhead members. Um, first and foremost. I know that my uh letter of resignation from the Parks and Rec was read, and I will not be seeking reelection this cycle. I would like to make a statement to the residents of Town of Dayton who have the confidence in me. Uh, to reelect me three times to that position to serve in nine years. I am very proud of the accomplishments that we have had in the nine years that I've been there, from having Easter egg hunts to. Halloween uh events for the children, and not only that, but uh helping in the process of building a three hundred thousand dollar. Tennis court um basketball facility for our residents. I've had the distinct honor and privilege um of being there with these people for nine years. And um, I again thank the residents of the Town of Dayton for having the confidence in me. Um, Dr. Zgravis, in regards to the events um in the future for the Medal of Honor for Frederick C. Anderson. Um, I'd like to ask that um if the Board of Selectmen has not done it, um, that they reach out to our local. State Senator and State Rep to get some type of a proclamation that can be read that day, and also uh a proclamation, of course, from the Board of Selectmen. Um, honoring Frederick C. Anderson and such. I'd like to see this personally. I know they're going to be here two days. Um, I'd like to see it done um not in one day. Um, accept the medal um first off, and then we can all gather to um. Honor Frederick C. Anderson at the naming of the bridge on Elm Street, this gentleman. Um, I have had the distinct honor and privilege also of working with a gentleman from Pawtucket, Rhode Island. Mr. Charles Mo Gayzel. I will spell his name, M O G A Y Z E L. He was involved with an outfit called Medal of Honor Lost to History. And these gentlemen go around to grave sites throughout the nation. Who tried to identify Medal of Honor recipients who have not been identified as such. I've had the distinct honor and privilege. I look forward to working with. Of course, our former veteran agent, uh, Mr. Hershey, in regards to setting this all up, and of course, with the. Assistance of the Board of Selectmen and anyone else would like to give us some help. Um, I will move on to the planning board. In regards to the planning board. Uh, we are receiving um all the package for Forest Hills, and that's off of Forest Street. So there will be a subdivision going in. Um, I'm just going to guesstimate, I believe it's a hundred and forty homes. It still needs to be reviewed, of course, by conservation, so this amount of homes may change um in the subdivision. Depending on the circumstance. Um, I want to step away and put my C P C hat on. I've had the distinct honor and privilege of serving Chairman on that board for seven years. I have um turned over the reins to a gentleman who I am schooling. In order to go forward with the process. I believe that um in the future, we may have a representative from the planning board who will no longer be serving as the representative to the C P C. I am sure that I will probably end up taking that position over, and I um expect that I will. And I will be honored as such if I am chosen to serve on the C P C again. Um, I want to go back to Parks and Rec for a second in regards to statements that were made. In regards to uh handicap accessible playgrounds. I have received some information from our C O D um. Gentleman, uh, Mr. Gail, and along with uh Mr. Pacheco was the liaison. In regards to the C O D, and uh we are working in. In conjunction with these committees, and I do plan on giving and staying on. And giving my inputs um to go forward with this endeavor. And I have stated in the past that it's my belief that. A project of such nature is a capital outlay project, but if we can use other funding first. To help us defray the cost of a possible new playground, wherever that may location may be. Um, I think that would be our best av- avenue. Um, C P C wise, uh, we do have a two projects. Uh, we've been asked for some guidance and direction. Uh, with the applications that have been presented to us in regards to a. Grant for the Dayton Trails Committee and also a grant for the Historical Commission. Now, I believe that we will be going it forward at town meeting with Warren Otten for those two projects, who's the only project presented to us for this fiscal year. And I believe that um we will have um. The residents of the town will approve such projects because they are very important. First off, the Dayton Trails Committee. Um, it's going to expand trail access to our residents in the town. That way they can have more um capabilities to go out and join recreational activities as in pass of recreation. In regards to the second application, that is for. Uh, what the Historical Commission would like to do is they would like to receive the grant, it's a matching grant, twenty-five thousand dollars. We. Provide the twelve thousand five hundred dollars. The state matches the other portion. And what their mission is, is they want to designate with blacks all the historical homes. That are in the boundaries of the Town of Dayton. I think it's an outstanding project, and we do have the funding for both. Um, at this time, I will again like to thank the Board of Selectmen for your time and the members and all the comment heads. And I still, again, look forward to working with the C O D Commission. And others um in regards to wherever a playground may be built in a Town of Dayton. The location would still had to be approved by the Board of Selectmen because they are in control of all town property. So thank you very much for that, Dr. Gravis.
Um, sorry, we're just getting ahead of ourselves, and I don't want to get back into this discussion on the playground. What I will say in the final word on the playground today will be. That I hope that everyone involved is Mr. Ryan's, whether he's a Parks Commissioner or not in this process. He's probably the most. Knowledgeable person in the town in terms of um just park, parks and recreation. So I think that. Um, my opinion would be, I hope that whether he's in in the talks or, you know, I hope someone will go to him for. Um, advice and counsel, like I, like I said, whether he's a Parks and Recreation Commissioner or on the C P C or not. So that's my uh request. Okay, um, I did want to ask one last thing, Mr. Ryan's. Um, when, so I know you said to reach out to Rep. Haddad and Senator Pacheco. When do we want these proclamations by?
Um, the family is scheduled to come out between March, uh, these days, March twenty-ninth through the thirty-first of March. So if we can um. Schedule something and speak to these uh people to get something together, uh, ASAP, that would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
I think the sooner the better in that aspect. And I mean, just one last thing that we, uh, you know, Mr. Hershey and I would have to set up.
Sure.
You know, if to go forward with that. I'd like to go, go, um, if I may. Um, who is coordinating the bridge dedication? Is that still under the guise of Mr. Hershey, or is that going to be another joint uh effort? I guess I don't.
Uh, Dr. Z?
Mm-hmm, Sackman Gular.
The last bridge we dedicated was the Clint Rose Bridge. The last bridge we dedicated was the Clint Rose Bridge and it was a joint effort because I think Mr. Taylor was the Veterans Agent and we had obviously the Board of Selectmen, we had Rep. Haddad and Senator Pacheco and there were a large group of townspeople that came and, oh, Father Paul was there from St. Nicholas and there was also, there was somebody, I'm thinking, I want to say American Legion, but there was somebody there also that offered a prayer. But it was a joint effort, Board of Selectmen, Veterans Agent. So I think we can put together a program that would be appropriate and anyone that wants to give feedback or whatever. I've got pictures of that. So I'll drag them out so people can just see, you know, what was going on that day. But it was very nice.
Dr. Z, if I may, Mrs. Goulart, would you reach out to Mr. Brown, please, Mr. Brian Brown, since he is involved with the United States Marine Corps League?
Yes.
They were there for the dedication of the Frank U. Custom Memorial Bridge. And I think if we reach out to them, they could have a catastrophe come for that day.
Yeah, yeah. That would be nice to have, even, that's right, because there were flag bearers and I'm, I believe they were, well, Clint Rose was in the Army. But I know there were, there were flag bearers. I know there were flags there. So yes, I will get in touch with Brian Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart.
Mrs. Brady, either you or Mrs. Kirwin will request those proclamations by the, you know, mid-March from Senator Pacheco and Rep. Haddad?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you all. I have to go. Have a wonderful day, everyone, and stay safe.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Pacheco.
I know our commission has an interest also in assisting in this. So whatever we can do, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who wants to get the final word today? Any final thoughts? Oh, I'm sorry, Town Accountant Laviolette, sir, you have the floor.
Good morning, everyone. Just a quick update and actually a big shout out to Jimmy Aguirre and Mike Barubi and the guys in the Highway Department for the spectacular job they did here on the new digs. Really fantastic job. You're all well. If you haven't already seen the new digs, you're welcome to stop by. Just want to let you know that after a very long and illustrious career here for the town of Dayton, Linda McCarron has announced, announced her retirement. I am in possession of her retirement letter. I haven't actually read it yet, but I believe she's pending, her pending retirement is March 31st. And just wanted to make that aware to everybody. And lastly, I'm in the process of generating everybody's monthly budget reports as of January 31st, which I'll be distributing today, just to keep everybody up to date. And then lastly, Brett, if I may, regarding the departmental budgets that haven't been received yet, didn't know if you wanted to wait until the, the budgets that are affected by their own committees or boards have had an opportunity to deliberate in public, which is typically standard for them before they actually submit. Not, not sure if that matters to you or not, but I just figured I'd throw that out there.
Well, it does matter, but that's why we sent out the email in early January so that they would meet in January and then have it done by January 31st. So I'm sorry, but there's just no excuse. And I, I just feel like if the department didn't make it a priority, I don't have the time to make it a priority. So it's getting level funded. If my colleagues want me to zero it, I'm happy to do that too, but just let me know. Okay?
Fair enough.
The last thing I wanted to mention, since we're on the topic of retirements, Linda has been an incredible resource for me, as have you, Chris. Over the last four months, without having a town administrator, Linda has really been my go-to. I'm gonna miss her so much. I can't even begin to state how much I'm gonna miss her. But someone else I'm gonna also miss is Sergeant Dave McWark, who has retired today and has given, you know, three decades, over 30 years of service to the town and to our residents. We will vote to accept his resignation, retirement letter, excuse me, tonight. But I did just want to also take a little bit of opportunity to shout out the good work that both Linda and Dave have given of their lives to our town, our residents in our community. And we really appreciate them. With that, does anybody have anything else before we conclude? All right. Hearing nothing. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. Everyone, thank you so much. Emergency Preparedness Committee, I will see you in four minutes. Have a good day, everyone. Enjoy, be safe. Bye, Mrs. Brady.